Planning Commission, November eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Welcome, everybody. I'm calling this Pro City Planning Commission to order. Today is Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. It is six o'clock. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on your own.
Just a quick announcement. Item number four will be heard before the city council on next Tuesday, November fourteenth, unless otherwise continued. As I said before, we'll do a roll call. We'll start with Commissioner Hill. Please state your name, and if you have any conflicts.
Jonathan Hill, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Barbie Di Soto, no conflicts.
All right. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to speak to the microphone. So that the record is clear, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please, please step out of the chambers. Also, please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over people. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated anytime. Please refrain from clapping or cheering during the hearing. If you feel you need more time than it's been allotted, if you're a member of the public, we limit it to two minutes, but if you feel any more, you're welcome to reach out to one of our staff members and they, you can continue discussions with them. I'll begin by reading item number one. Into the Agenda Development Services requests the adoption of the Hillside and Canyons Plan to support the two thousand twenty-three general plan. It's a citywide application. And a member of staff will be presenting.
Good evening, commissioners. Hannah is out of the office. She's principal on this plan, so I'm going to fill in for her. That being said, if you had reached out to her over the last week or so with any questions or suggestions, I won't have seen that, so they won't be addressed in this presentation, but please feel free to bring them up during this time. Between Planning Commission and now, or study session two weeks ago, and now, have you had any additional questions or concerns regarding the Hillside and Canyons Plan?
We'll check. And just for the rec, can you state your, can you remind us your name for the record?
Jessica Donakie.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
If not, I'll just go through a brief refresher of the slides and feel free to jump in with any questions.
Thank you.
So the Hillside and Canyons Plan was part of a resolution passed by council along with the rivers and lakeshore to address the increased pressure for development and recreation areas. It supports plans or it supports goals in the general plan. And additionally, it compiles goals from other plans that deal with the hillsides and canyons into one concise document. The project area encompasses pretty much the entire east portion of the city, anything east from Foothills Drive running down fourteen fifty east and through Slate Canyon Drive. As you see, we have it divided into three separate sections, the north, central, and south. This plan, through research and developing this plan, we've discovered that there were three primary themes that were the main focus of our technical working group and our citizens. They were the natural environments, preservation, conservation, the social environment, which is recreation and education, and then the built environment focusing on development sustainability. There's a lot of information in this plan, so we'll only be discussing those items highlighted in blue from this outline. So the guiding principles and vision statement is where you see the three themes come into play. Obviously, with the built environment, the focus was on development suitability and sustainability. And then with the social environment, we see the increased access for recreation and trail connectivity, and then with the natural environment, preservation and conservation of these amenities that we have. With the goal of this plan to create the hillsides and canyons as a place where people can visit both now and the future and enjoy these natural amenities with a variety of different recreation opportunities while still preserving environmentally sensitive areas and mitigating impact and natural hazards. So the plan process is slightly different than our standard plan process. We had a lot of site visits, worked through researching other plans where hillsides and canyons were referenced to create this vision. From there, we used our statistically valid survey done by Y2. Our technical working groups, our focus groups all came together to create this plan that was then reviewed and revised by our technical working groups, and the final draft is what you have before you. To start, here's some of the information from the Y2 survey. You'll see that Provo Canyon is considered the most iconic and the most heavily visited natural amenity in the city. We have a very good jumping off point with over half of the responses being satisfied with the canyons. Slightly less in the foothills, but you can see we already have a good base and people like what's there. When asked what they would like to see, overall cleanliness, an increase in restrooms and facilities, and then specifically in the foothills, more focus on environmental protection. With priorities, the single word is preservation for habitat, look, and watersheds. And then when asked about development, the desire for development is relatively minimal, and any development they wanted to see was to be focused on recreational facilities and amenities. So the existing conditions within this project area, we have our connections, which we have three major trailheads that the city owns and maintains, which are all connected through the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. And then we have four canyons within this project area, Provo Canyon, Rock Canyon, Slate Canyon, and Slate Canyon. With land cover, a third of this project area is already developed open space, and most of the vegetative cover is that Rocky Mountain woodland and shrubland. And then the wildlife influence, we do have a lot, a very diverse group of wildlife, larger mammals definitely coming down into the foothills like deer in the wintertime searching for food. Most notably, there is a portion of this area that is habitat for the endangered Rocky Mountain bighorn sheep. Development concerns include the slopes that we have to work with. Fifty percent, fifteen percent of this area is in thirty percent or greater, which does not allow for development. But a majority of this area does fall into the ten to thirty percent. And then, of course, fire is a longstanding concern with almost seventy percent of the project area being an extreme or high wildfire hazard. And we address fire concerns more in depth later on. Additionally, we have two major fault lines, the Maple Flat and the Horse Mountain with additional smaller fault lines. And then soil conditions vary from extremely rocky to silty with risk of erosion. So when you combine all of those concerns and constraints, this map is showing areas that are actually suitable for development within the Hillside and Canyons project area. For, instead of a standard implementation matrix like we have in the general plan, this one is set up with a different structure, having a specific goal with a number of strategies and then specific priority actions. Because this document is focused more long-term and will require a lot of external partnerships and different funding, there isn't a specific timeline that has been assigned to these goals. It was seen to be more of a hindrance or something that could muddy the waters. So the goals for the natural environment are preservation and restoration of natural habitats and, as appropriate, conserve areas and partnerships with local management organizations to initiate comprehensive management plan for the environmentally sensitive lands, identifying key ecological features and establishing management plans for enhancing those, initiating efforts for hazard mitigation and emergency preparedness, addressing soil fill, erosion, seismic activity, and then, of course, encouraging water protection and conservation in this area. The goals for the social environment are to increase opportunities for outdoor recreation, encourage trail connectivity, and educate the public about the importance of preservation in this area. And then the goals for the built environment are to encourage development best practices, to minimize the impact on the environment, to limit development in environmentally sensitive areas, and to consider the scenic qualities of the hillside to ensure development is fitting into these natural settings. So again, the plan has multiple guidelines and best practices as part of it. The main one that we'll be touching on is hillside and development best practices. So this plan recommends conducting a site assessment in our critical hillside and other suspected sensitive areas, ensuring that we have accurate information about geological hazard, erosion risk, and other features such as natural features, wildlife habitat that it could be affecting, topography, vegetative cover, designing for sustainability, which is already a priority, to minimize the environmental impacts, to consider native and low-water plant for water conservation. Again, erosion control, you'll see that come up a lot. It's very important in these areas. And then encouraging energy-efficient infrastructure. We have the option to explore more than one layout for any given lot or development. One of the recommendations is to ensure that we've looked at the options for developing in an area and that what is being proposed is the most effective use with the least amount of impact on the natural environment. Again, implementing erosion control is a major priority in this area as it can affect the overall water quality later down. And then, of course, we want proper construction techniques, making sure that the slopes geography has been taken into account and making sure that foundations have been set up to be drained and meet all requirements for the soil that it's in. We want to ensure hazard mitigation, especially fires, but additionally landslide, rockfall, other hazards that are just natural to this area. And then lastly, to monitor the site after development to ensure that these mitigation strategies that have been put in place are effective in the long term, making sure erosion control is still functioning and monitoring for new hazards that weren't identified previously. Lastly, is the implementation suggestions. Within these five specific areas, they came up with opportunities for creating. You'll see mountain biking come up as the number one requested new amenity. We have a lot of people around here who enjoy mountain biking and want somewhere to practice their skillset, and we have a lot of hikers who would enjoy not having mountain bikers on their trails. With Provo Canyon specifically, there's the addition of the gravel pit and addressing that through a task force to ensure that its use, either restoring or repurposing, it's the best use for that sensitive area. And then again, in the Rock Canyon Trailhead, the Slate Canyon Trailhead, and the Cave Peak Outdoor Recreation Area, the main focus is just improving or expanding upon amenities there. Better bathrooms, better lighting, adding better surfacing to trails. Any questions?
I'm not seeing any questions by commissioners. If you have one, now's the time, or otherwise we'll shift over to comment by other parties. No questions, Jessica. Thank you. All right. This is a citywide application. I'm not going to ask for. Well, no, is there any district representatives present? No? Okay. We'll go ahead and open this to public comment, the public hearing portion of the meeting. Please come up, state your name. It'll be limited to two minutes, after which a red light or actually the microphone will turn off. Please line up if you are going to comment, so we can keep it moving. Anyone from the public? Seeing none, we will close the public comment on the public hearing portion of the item. Commissioners, this is our chance to discuss. Any comments or feedback? Andrew?
I just think from the study session that we had a couple of weeks ago, it was, there were very few comments. I mean, it's obviously been well-vetted and lots of great insights, and I, I think we're, I'm personally really excited about it.
Go ahead, Chris.
That same comment, basically, but this is something that council asked for, and it's been reviewed so many times, then I'm ready to turn it over to them to make a final decision, I think. It's exciting to have a document that sort of pulls the relevant things together for an area.
Okay, I'm looking at, had a lot of heads nodding. Does anyone want to bring forth a motion? Commissioner needs to.
I'll make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number one. Development Services requests the adoption of the Hillside and Canyons Plan to support the two thousand twenty-three general plan, citywide application.
Is there any discussion on the motion? There's none. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously, six zero. Item number two, Provo City Development Services requested the adoption of the River and Lakeshore Plan, citywide application. Staff member Jansen Toishers will be presenting.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'll hopefully make this this quick. This was designed and created in conjunction with the Canyon Plan, so the format is very, very similar. So similar to why we're doing this plan, as you guys stated, this is something that was asked for by city council back in two thousand nineteen. And it's something that that the public has been asking for, right? As Jessica previously mentioned, Provo Outdoors and our recreation is something that we take pride in here in Provo. And so this is just to add some measures to specifically the rivers and lakes to make that long-term. Have some long-term goals with it. So this is the project area of the plan, so as you can see, it's the lake and, or at least the area of the lake that Provo has, and then Provo River. Right? Very similar to the previous plan. It's written around these three themes, and we'll see that each of the goals for this plan revolve around those three things. We'll go through. So, so very similar as Jessica was talking about with the hillside and canyons. However, this plan kind of focuses more on water quality and water conservation, considering that it deals with the rivers and lakeshore as well as recreational opportunities and tourism opportunities in the future. So very similar in that that survey that we used for the general plan, again, it mentions, you know, Provo River and the lake is top features that Provo residents visit monthly. So this, again, is just to help solidify and to conserve some of those areas. Now, in the plan, it does go over some existing conditions. One of the biggest problems that we see in the future is, as we can see on the one that's on the left-hand side, is ownership is a big issue in Provo. Of the the project area, only twenty-two percent is actually currently owned by Provo. However, there are some opportunities in the future if we're dealing with the state or with private residents that we can make some, some of these improvements. It goes through other existing conditions where it talks about connectivity and the river and lake hydrology and stuff like watershed as well. But ultimately, it comes with this final map that talks about the areas that are in that light brown color are areas that are suitable for future development into, and we, we use the word development not necessarily to mean, actually, something, but ways to accomplish our goals. So very similar, it's built, or it's set into these natural, it's set into these three kind of categories. When we talk about the natural one, it mostly is focusing on water quality and water management, habitat restoration, stuff like that. The social environment is mostly about the recreational opportunities along the lake and the river. What else we can do for trail improvements as well as educational opportunities that we can use as well. And then finally, you have that that built environment, and this is for the what are some potential future in development that we could see in the area as well as some tourism and conservation efforts that we can see as well. These are kind of the, again, it's broken down into those guidelines and best practices. These are kind of the themes that are addressed in those best practices, is we give those goals, and then here are some ways to accomplish them. One of the big things in this plan is actually stormwater. And so one of the the heavy ones that we talked about are actually best practices for dealing with and upgrading our stormwater as well as what are some water-wise practices, as we can see. Both of those are very important to Provo residents as well as long-term survivability for Provo. It's very important that we deal with with these two issues as well. Again, it mentions that implementation, and it kind of breaks it down into different areas of the, of the river, as you can see, highlighted in the different colors, and kind of what should be the priority in those specific. So it even does, it helps us do a better job at identifying what are some specific goals for specific areas, because the river everywhere is not, is not the same as we've cut out, and kind of each one kind of faces its own unique challenges. And we do have some suggested changes already in there. And these are just them that wanted to identify them, although they're not in the current version that we have. We have noted them, and they will be changed. Any questions? Sorry, I went through that fast, but it's, it's very similar to the hillside and canyons. The primary focus, though, is just the rivers and the lakes.
Commissioners, go ahead.
Just one question. When we did our study session, and I don't know there was a specific ask for this, but the question came up. Is there city-owned access to Utah Lake? We couldn't put our finger on any, but.
I don't.
Yeah, we don't.
And that's, and that's one of the challenges.
Yes.
Is that something we should address in the plan, or you say you feel like it's listed as a challenge and it's?
So it's a challenge and something that's identified as we have like partnerships as with, for each of our goals, we have, you know, what are some strategies? What are some priority actions? What are some partnerships? And a lot of them, we do mention working kind of with the state. The state actually does own a large portion of of the lake and mostly of the lakes. So it's, it's working with them. We don't know if that's, that's something that we think that we can, like, buy back from the state. But it's something that we do think that we can create a partnership.
I had one question. You just mentioned that development, when, on that map that showed the brown areas that were suitable for development, and then you clarified that those were areas, and by development, you meant suitable for helping us to maintain or to achieve our goals in those areas. Do you think maybe relabeling it to, with a different word, so that people don't go in and say, oh, Provo City's plan says that they want to develop here. I'm going to build a hotel here.
So there's.
I mean, zoning would preclude that.
Yeah, that was brought up. And yeah, so I'm trying to think, there's, there's either that change is going to happen, where we're going to change the word develop, or there's going to be one of the appendices that they're creating as a like a word glossary.
That would be useful.
Develop is going to be not necessarily actual, like, physical development.
Right.
Could be like open space development, stuff like that, because you're right, it can be confusing when we've had that comment.
We don't want, we, because we talked about the balance between preserving the natural environment in these rivers and lakeshores versus encouraging tourism, and those two things are competing interests, and you don't want your word choices on your maps to mislead somebody one way or the other.
Exactly.
Okay, that was my only new thought.
Yeah, maybe something like built environment limitation.
And I think that that's something that they're and it's a good, because I'm trying to remember off the top of my head if, if they're going to change the word or if they're going to do the glossary, but I think it probably, even if they're going to do the glossary, it's probably better to, to clarify the term a little bit.
Even just in your labeling on the map, whether it's in a glossary or it's renamed or not, just, you know, where it says development, parenthetically, you could say areas suitable for so achieving our goals or something. I like how you worded it.
It says it in the text, but you're right, if people are mostly, I mean, they're going to look to the map first, and if it's like, oh, develop, let's, let's build a giant hotel. So you're right, it's, it could be clarified better, and we'll make sure that happens.
And obviously, someone who's a savvy developer is going to be familiar with the fact that the zoning does not allow a giant hotel there, and but I just feel like we may as well make it as clear as possible.
Cut it off, cut it off before it becomes problematic.
Any other question, Commissioner? All right, I'm not seeing any other questions, Jansen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any district representatives like to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing portion of this item. Please come up, state your name. We have two minutes. Not seeing anyone come up for item number two. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion. Commissioners, any discussion?
I have the same comment as last one, that this has been gone through a million times. I'm sure there's still typos and whatever, but the subs-
I'm sure there's still typos and whatever, but the substance of it is something that I I'm excited about and ready to let the council look at it.
I'm seeing head nodding by everybody. Uh, does anyone else have one want to comment they want to put in? Okay, um, all entertaining motions.
I'll move that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed river and lakeshore plan to the municipal council. As encompassed in item two, development services proposes adoption of the river and lakeshore plan.
Any discussion on the motion? Any, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
A second by Commissioner Hill. Uh, we'll go ahead and vote. Uh, Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
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 Uh, motion passes unanimously six zero. Move on to item number three. Uh, Susan Palmer requests concept plan approval for flex warehouse and office space. And a proposed airport industrial zone located at thirty four ten. West Center Street for Utah Neighborhood. Uh, staff member Aaron Ardmore will be presenting.
And if the commission could also read in four, we.
Oh, yes, thank you. Susan, item number four, Susan Palmer requests a zone map amendment. From the A one ten zone to the airport industrial zone. In order to develop a flex industrial park located approximately thirty four ten. West Center Street for Utah Neighborhood. Mr. Ardmore.
Appreciate that. Alright, so um, this commission has seen this property before. Uh, if you recall, in twenty twenty two, we were here to amend the general plan. Uh, for this property and the the large property to the west. From at that time is residential in the general plan and uh, it was changed to airport related designation. In anticipation of of development like this. Um, so a little bit more in the history there since that time. Uh, where those two properties were working together to get that general plan changed. Uh, the the property on the west contracts fell out. Uh, the property in front of us tonight. Uh, have since advanced in their concept plan and their reason application. Uh, and that's what's before you tonight. Uh, you also notice a uh, a piece up in the. North corner of this uh, highlighted. That is currently Provo City property. Uh, the applicant is currently working with our property manager. And and doing everything that needs to be done to to tie that in as it's a a landlocked parcel. Uh, this was the only really. Realistic uh, tie as you can come off like you parkway there near the bridge. Um, so they're incorporating that into their development. So the development, uh, right now, as you see, it's uh, uh, agricultural zone. And and the request is to bring it into airport industrial. Uh, we've gone over the general plan. Uh, the. The support for this um, from staff, from from economic development, uh, from from. Development services as a whole. Uh, this is something that the general plan. Thought would be coming. This is the type of development that we're anticipating out near the airport. Uh, so the specifically. Um, it's one of the the key things that we tried to make sure happened on this was. Adjusting the river as you just saw the rivers and lakeshores plan. Uh, this is an opportunity to. Have that openness to the river, uh, not put the the backs of the buildings to it, not. Put a giant fence in a parking lot against it, but leave some open space, recreational space against that. Uh, they've done that with this concept. Uh, you can see some some specific areas there and then a a looping trail through the through the development. I that was important to staff to to make sure that was included. Uh, another thing to. Kind of future looking is uh, engineering staff wanted to make sure that there was connections to the west. Uh, someday that property could develop just very similar to this. Uh, so there you'll see a couple connections to the parking lot access to the west there. So there could be some internal movement without kind of jumping back into some industry. These details, um, because it's a concept plan, because it's a rezone, uh, we. We we told the applicant these concerns, the applicant has uh, proffered these into a development agreement, which helped us feel a lot more. Comfort with suggesting uh, that we are ready to move towards uh, these public hearings and and recommending approval to. To the commission and the council. Believe that's all I have. Unless there's any questions for me.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Aaron, could you help me a little bit with this? The Lakeview Parkway was established in one of the major parts of the Lakeview. The Parkway, what it was supposed to accomplish was to take a lot of the traffic off from Center Street. Would come off south of the north and it would go along Lakeview rather than go downtown and go down Center Street.
Sure.
I live on Center Street, several blocks to the east. The traffic on Center Street recently, the last year has just gone out of control. It is just twenty four seven, big trucks all the time down Center Street. Why cannot we make an exit or an entrance? Off of this property onto Lakeview Parkway. So the trucks can get on to Lakeview rather than to get on to Center Street. And then have to make a left hand turn or a right hand turn to get on the Lakeview.
It's a good question. Uh, David Day could probably address this with more expertise, uh, but as I understand it. Uh, there's some sloping there as you're you're working from Center Street up towards the bridge. There's some grade change, uh, so difficulty with the grade change there and accessing it at that point. Um, but both both roads are collectors. David?
Arterials.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and uh, Mr. Day, was he come up? He could also kind of address the like the width of Center Street there. What's it going to be? Wide enough to accommodate safely those right and left turns with lanes.
Yeah, so David Day with Public Works. Center Street is a arterial down to Lakeview Parkway and then a collector beyond that and then. Lakeview Parkway is an arterial. Aaron mentioned that the the grade of Lakeview Parkway goes up to the bridge, so. We wouldn't want connections on Lakeview Parkway. Um, unless it was a city street and there's probably not a way to put that on right there. Our intent would be to. Um, get the heavy trucks to go on Lakeview Parkway. Instead of up center. Um, problem is. It can go south right now, but going north is not connected yet, but we expect that to be done in the next five years. Is that answer? Also, Center Street is. An arterial, um. It's not. Built to what we would consider a arterial type road currently. And. We don't really have any plans to widen Center Street in the near future. Uh, the hope would be to defer all the heavier traffic onto the newer Lakeview Parkway. Center Street is. Kind of a desired connection because it goes right up to the. To the I fifteen, but we're hoping that north traffic will go north and south traffic will go south. That's the.
So then that portion that's. In the ingress egress on Center Street, is that? How how wide is that road? Is there a turning lane? Um, or is it just one lane each direction?
Yeah, so we'll have to work out the exact design of that. Um. It may be that 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 connection meets to move further west. To avoid conflict with turning movements in the intersection. So. Just. Concept plans, we get them to a concept level and then we'll. Work with it from there to get it to a final level, but I would see that that entrance moving west. Cause, cause the proximity to the intersection that's already there. At Lake Parkway and Center would, it would be probably in the start of the left turn lane.
Go ahead.
If uh, Center Street is a intended to be an arterial lane, but it's not built to those standards. Uh, currently, and there's no plans to do it, are there? Other, are there mechanisms that are being considered to try to help enforce or direct that traffic? I mean, are there restrictions that can be put on truck traffic over certain GBW? Or I mean, is there something that can be done there?
Not really. Um, we. We don't prohibit anybody from using it. However, it's it'll stay that three lane cross section. In some areas it has the center median and in other areas it's just a double yellow. But one lane east and one lane west. There's houses already built on both sides. If we were to do anything major with that, it would impact. Many homes, um. We're hoping that. By leaving it how it is, it keeps the traffic down at a manageable level. If we were to. Widen it. It's kind of if you build it, they'll come.
Right.
So. We're hoping Center Street will. Level off. That there is. Kind of an inordinate amount of traffic on center because of all the work that is happening out here. But now that we have the Lakeview Parkway almost complete full width. From Center Street to I fifteen. We're hoping that will encourage people to go south.
So I've said this before, can the city not at least just put a sign that says please use Lakeview Parkway like? Not enforced, not banning, but it seems like we could at least give the hint, if that makes sense. To alleviate those concerns.
Kind of get what you're saying.
Like airport tra- like on the freeway, airport traffic, use next exit or something like that.
Truck traffic used Lakeview Parkway.
Yeah, um, that will work better when we have. The connection up in Orem, so eventually Lakeview Parkway will tie into Geneva Road. But that will happen in Orem. And Geneva Road, if you can imagine. Geneva Road will tie in kind of at a T. So the priority direction will be Lakeview Parkway, so. If if you didn't make any turns on Geneva Road going south, you would end up on Lakeview Parkway. Going out around, so. If you're going north. It would probably be faster to take Lakeview Parkway to University Avenue, use University Parkway. Exit rather than going up center.
Current currently or after the it's.
When it's connected.
When it's connected.
Yeah, cause, yeah. That'll be a five lane section all the way. Up through Orem and. You can see the way we've built Lakeview Parkway, it kind of has a separated median. It's built to be a higher volume road. Projections for. Thirty years away from now is that this this road would be carrying. Similar traffic volumes as. Probably Fifth West.
I agree with the comment about where it's placed, that I could see how trucks slowing down. To turn into the parking lot could cause major. Uh, backups. People already have a habit of blocking intersection. Um, so yeah, I think that that. I know you said it's just a concept, but I just wanted to make note. I think that's something. I had a question though about. The parking, this is supposed to be a warehouse. Is this the standard amount of parking that is required? Cause it seems like a lot. It seems almost more like a like a. Like a shopping center or an office building rather than a warehouse.
So this concept does show more than what it could require. Uh, they're showing about, well. Twenty four more spaces, so a little bit more than what what we'd require. Um, so this is flex office industrial warehouse, so. There could be some some users that have a number of employees and and we want to try to. Try to bet on that side of it rather than have a parking problem.
Um, can you remind me the history of this? I am thinking that this is the property that came with a mixed residential plan a couple of years ago. Is that further to the west?
Yeah, so the property to the west was the residential plan and then properties across the street to the south. Had uh, the industrial portion and those all three kind of came together.
Okay.
For the reasons. Um, the property to the west, you can see it's still zone R one eight PD.
Okay.
And right below that is the M one. So those two came together as kind of this overall large concept.
So on the right hand side, that brown area. Uh, on the north side of Center Street, both of those sections are now. Um, airport industrial as opposed to.
Yeah, the darker, the darker brown in the general plan map are are airport related.
So, um. I don't remember this um, general plan change.
Okay.
And so when I first read this, I was like, why would we do this on the north side of the river? But I'm looking at it or on the north side of Center Street. I'm guessing the logic at the time for the change was because it's kind of this little landlocked by the river area.
Yep, exactly.
So it. Uh, I just, I'm kind of worried about this still being so close to a neighborhood and um. Like I trust your judgment. For the most part, because you've looked at it more than me, but that that does worry me, but because the general plan's already been changed, there's sort of a. Like they're they're meeting.
There's a, there's. And I I think there's some pretty healthy buffers there as well. I mean, we did consider that, but Lakeview Parkway is such a big road and it's on a slope there. Where that really acts as a.
Even visually.
Visual and sound buffer. Um, going across the street to the south Center Street. All of that is slated for airport related as well. Um, so so the impact really isn't as much as you would think in the typically residential area.
Um, and those those homes have already been general planned out of residential essentially.
Yes, yeah, the the three or four homes there on Center.
Have we heard from those property owners at all in regards to this?
Um, not recently.
Okay, that would be a curious information that I would love to know. Um, the last question I have is what are the improvements that have been proffered in the development agreement? That was one of the reasons staff was recommending this, so. If they're so great, can you tell us what they are?
Yeah, so specifically, um. There are multiple acres of open space that will specifically provide workout areas, picnic spots, pedestrian pathways. Um, a commitment to provide open fencing along the river, not side obscuring. Um, and then, like I said, the the connections to the west parcel. So those are, those are the things that uh, the the applicant has has guaranteed.
Why is it, um, okay, two, two more questions just popped up from that. Is the. The pathway specifically for employees of the property or is it meant to be a public right of way?
Third question. Uh, they, we haven't talked about an easement or anything that that's serious in nature. Um, I anticipate that it'd mostly be used by the employees, the visitors of this campus.
And the little parcel in the northeast corner, is that the city parcel that will triangle?
Yes.
Is there a reason they that the city has been asked to be in on this, just so that the zoning looks consistent? Or is there some other objective?
Um, cities, uh, city manager, property manager, I sent out uh, a request from all the directors saying, you know. Do we have any purpose for this land? There's there's a little bit uh, that we'll have to keep an easements because there's some facilities on the the north side of it near the river. Uh, but otherwise, it is just kind of this this leftover piece from the bridge construction. Um, that could be be better served by by open space for this use.
So it would be sold essentially?
Yeah.
And then put as part of the development with access preserved for the city to get to those facilities?
Yeah, yeah, so you can see the kind of the, they try to respect the view corridors as as well as the access. Um, so people can still see out to the river.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm just to follow up on that, the. With the fencing being open to view, is it, is it also, is it contiguous? Are there gaps in fencing that allow public to? to be on the riverside?
I, we haven't gotten to that much detail on this concept plan. Those are things that would typically be worked out in the project plan. I'd anticipate there'd be open gates. I mean, otherwise, how do the employees even get back in there, right, on that trail? That's like, that's a question that you can ask South Ken. I know they're here tonight.
Yeah, that's something I'd want to see. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, my question, I don't know if it's better for you or for the applicant. The developer on the east side of Lakeview Parkway is putting in a trail along the Dyke Road, essentially right on the river. I believe that when we built the bridge, there is a tunnel that goes underneath. So I think it'd be really nice. I don't know if there's any plans to do it, but to connect those. So there's a continuous trail that goes just out of shot here is a new park that's going in. It'd be really nice to have all of that accessible.
I agree. Of course, the city trail, the city and county trail is maintained on the north side of the river.
Right.
So it, it would have to be a private agreement between the property owners and maintenance and all of that. I like the idea of it, but.
Yeah, I mean, what we were told, because like I said, it's going in on the other side is because you have to have access on the Dyke Road for, for trucks anyway. So there's, there's going to be kind of a gravel path. It won't be improved. It won't be paved, but there will be a gravel path. It's always maintained on there for access along the river. So it'd be nice to see that tied in.
Could you maybe just be best for the applicant? I don't know. Chad Hinckley that lives on the east side and the Hallidays that live on the west side. They're old farmers that have been there for a hundred years or more. What are we doing to around their homes? So that they're not destroyed by all the traffic and the noise and everything else that this will bring?
So a few, a few responses to that, I think. I think the first one is they were supportive of the general plan when it came along. So they kind of knew this was coming. Two, the Hallidays were in contract to build essentially the same thing behind their homes there on the larger parcel to the west. So there is some sense of comfort or maybe future planning that they have. I'm not sure. I haven't had discussions, specific discussions with those property owners. But they were notified. I mean, they were notified of this hearing. They were notified of the last hearing. And typically people come out or send emails when they're in opposition, when they aren't bothered by it or like it, they don't. So we, we usually take that cue as general support, but no, I haven't had specific conversations with them.
Is there going to be any kind of fencing or berms or what kind of?
So yeah, in between disparate uses, the code fourteen thirty-four, three hundred has certain standards for buffers, landscape buffers, fences, walls. So the city code is pretty strong in addressing those, those type of transitions.
Commissioner South, you have a comment earlier?
I'm just, I think circling back to Commissioner Hill's comment about the trail and fact that this is city land now and just, and on the heels of our discussion about the, 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 the river, yeah, the river plan that we just put together. I'm just wondering if there's anything that we might be missing that once it's gone, it's gone. Like, is there any other reason we'd want to see something done here or have some connection here? Or I'll admit to not knowing that area very well.
I think that I'm getting that as a, as a concern from the planning commission. I, I, I feel that and I think that's a worthy discussion with the applicant, a question, a concern that give, give them the option to address that.
I'm not seeing any other questions for you, Mr. Ardmore.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll go and then go ahead and have the applicant come forward. I'm sorry. Is Susan Palmer or her representatives here? Please note, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will, will be muted. Following your presentation, if we have questions, we'll invite you to come forward at the time. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Susan, Susan is able to be here, but I'm Norm Avery. And so I've been working on this here for a few months and I was here till the last meeting. But one of the, one of the unique things about this project that we fully support is the development around the river. And we've been working with a number of ideas up there and everything, everything that's been discussed up in that area right there will be open to the public. And so we'll be working with staff to make sure that that's a really neat area for the public to access and to recreate up in that area. So no issue there whatsoever. We like that idea. We like incorporating the city property up on the north. We like that amenity that's gonna really enhance that whole area right up there. So so we'll be working with staff on that. It'll be nice.
Do you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, go ahead. Yeah.
I don't want to cut you off before I.
You're, you're just good.
Send you a barrage of questions.
Aaron, Aaron covered it good. Yeah, so.
Okay. Well, if you don't mind, um, so just to clarify or get it more explicit, like you, you don't have any problems with a, a gap or an opening within the fencing that allows someone to come through and, and fish. The reason I think about this, I think in on eighteen sixty, sixty South and East Bay, near the Neville Building, there, there is a canal, a stream canal. I don't know what to call it, but there's, you always see members of the public fishing there. And, and that's why I imagine when I, when I ask that question, is there, you know, is there fencing, but is there going to be gaps that allow public access? I'm, I'm wondering, you know, as part of our, our river and lakeshore plan and and one of the stated goals being public access is, is there, will there be openings to?
There will, there will be no problem with public access. Yeah. We think that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
That just reminded me, Mr. Hill's question earlier about having it tie in with the other trail that's being, the Dyke Trail that's being hooked into. I wondered if it wasn't possible to connect on the north end to the Dyke Trail, if maybe there could be like public. If there's a rise, maybe just a stairway or something that goes up to Lakeview Parkway so people can access going around or something so that those trails can be interconnected.
I think they probably could. Yes. I don't think that would be a problem.
Sounds great.
Okay, just to, if you guys don't mind me, I guess summarizing that there's concerns about buffers between this.
Houses?
This house, this property and adjacent houses, but it sounds like, like the city code addresses those transitions, but then there's also concerns about the connect trail connectivity with the Dyke area and then maybe I'm the only one that has concern, a little bit concerned with public access, but it, I, I would recommend that whoever brings a motion forward that you just, we, we can note those as if you want to do motion deny, you address those concerns if you want to be a motion to approve, then address, bring those concerns up as well.
We, we, just a quick comment here. We haven't heard any opposition with the property owners, but, but we're, we're prepared to deal with any kind of ordinance that's, that's needed to make sure there's barriers there.
Anyone else have any other questions for the applicant? Just a few questions. Thank you. I appreciate it. We'll go ahead and open up this to the public hearing portion. This for items three and four. Any district will, before that, any district representatives present, members of the public. I'm not seeing any members of the public. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of of this item on the agenda. Commissioners?
I would, I would love to make a motion, just a preliminary motion to pass our concerns along the municipal council about trail connectivity as that's the only one that we've discussed that's not already managed by an ordinance. I think that would, that would cover your public access and like not separating it from the other trails in the area. So I would, I make a motion to pass our concerns along to municipal council about trail connectivity.
Can I comment on that first?
Discussion on the motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Discussion on the motion. That's how we'll do it. Sandy, I think there's a figure, at least there is in our materials, that's a zoomed out view of the area. I just want to show you guys kind of where this is coming from, what this is talking about. So in the top right corner there, you can see where Lake Shore Drive kind of meets the river right at the corner of the picture. Or no, Lake Shore Drive, the next one over. So right up there in the very edge of the picture. East of there extending quite a bit into the neighborhood, there already is a trail along the river. The city has actually done improvements on it. Yeah, thanks, Aaron. So they've actually done improvements, put bridges over little waterways, things like that. It's quite nice. It's going to go underneath Lake Shore Drive, right on the south side of the river there and connect into what is a new park that's being installed as part of the Delta Project. So that is kind of between Lake Shore Drive and the river on the west side. That area will be a park and then the developer of the land surrounding Lake Shore Drive there will continue that trail down to Lakeview Parkway. And so when we've looked at this repeatedly, when the previous proposals came through, the zone change or the general plan change, everything, the hope was, and the developer that the contracts apparently fell through on, was saying they would do is have that trail connect all the way through down to connect at the ropes course down on Center Street there. And so it would create a great connectivity throughout the neighborhoods. Just dirt trails, not bike trucks. That's on the north side. But it, you know, makes it much more walkable in the area to access the river and all these areas. So.
So basically it gives us a trail on both sides of the river.
It does. Yep. Two different kinds. So on this side, it's just kind of an improved gravel. It's great for horses. It's great for walking. On the north side, you've got something that's more amenable for bikes and scooters and whatnot. So.
I don't think that changes my motion. It still covers it. It's just more information.
Right. I, I, I feel as a comment, a dead dub. Yeah, but go ahead. I don't think we need to repeat the motion. It's already been made. Any discussion on the motion? Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on it. Oh, did you? Yeah, you made the motion. Yeah. Start with Commissioner Hill.
Hi.
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 All right. Item number three passes.
That was actually not for an item. That was just a, whatever happens with our vote next. Make sure the municipal council knows that this is important to us.
You're right.
Right?
Correct. Thank you.
But I'm willing to make a motion for item three if we're at that point.
Ready for motion on item number three? It looks like it. Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Okay, given that this is in line with the general plan and they far exceed the requirements for the, for the area. If the zone change is approved, I don't have a problem with this. So I make a motion that we approve the concept plan subject to city council approval of the zone change to airport industrial. For item number three, Susan Palmer requests concept plan approval for Flex Warehouse and Office Space in a proposed airport industrial zone located at thirty-four ten west Center Street in the Fort Utah neighborhood.
Discussion on the motion. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
We'll go ahead and vote. Commissioner Hill?
Hi.
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 A motion passes six zero. Item number four. Does anyone want to bring forth a motion on item number four, zone map amendment?
I can do this one.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hill.
I move that we recommend approval of the proposed rezone from agricultural to airport industrial zone. For item four, Susan Palmer requests a zone map amendment from the A110 zone to the AI zone in order to develop a flex industrial park located at approximately thirty-four ten west Center Street, Fort Utah neighborhood.
Discussion on the motion. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Go ahead and vote. Commissioner Hill?
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes six zero. Before we move on to items number five and six, I request that we, I, I move that we take a, a three minute break. Someone second that, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. Vote, vote aye.
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 Do you like how I chose you to vote?
Nay.
We'll go ahead and reconvene back on the clock. Item number five, Tate Murphy requests concept plan approval for two new detached single family homes with accessory dwelling units in a proposed LDR zone located at nine sixty-three west five hundred north Dixon neighborhood. And also read in number six, Tate Murphy requests approval of a zone map amendment from the R16 zone to the LDR zone in order to build two new detached homes with accessory apartments located at nine sixty-three west five hundred north Dixon neighborhood. Staff member Aaron Ardmore presenting.
Okay, thank you. So first, you guys have received a couple emails about this one. If you have questions about those that my presentation doesn't address, I'd be happy to address those at the end. But hopefully you've, you've read those. This project has, has taken some time, but I think that time has served it well. The initial proposal here had some concerns. The applicant has worked with staff over the, the, the reviews through staff review CRC and, and been able to address those to, to help us feel comfortable with this one coming forward. So the property here, just off Fifth North, you could see it's, it's one of the larger remaining lots off of, off of five You could see it's, it's one of the larger, uh, remaining lots off of, off of five hundred North. Uh, he's got a single family home right here on nine sixty-three. There was, uh, a approved plan to do a flag lot here, and that's why you see that second address. Um, so it got us so far as having the Mylar in our hands, ready to record in the county. Uh, but the, the property owner wanted to see, um, maybe what a better la- uh, use of the land would be. Um, so he, he brought forward this concept plan, uh, and this rezon request. So the shift in the proposal, uh, you guys didn't see this, but originally he, the proposal was to. Fit, uh, three additional homes in the back of the property. Uh, it, tho- though the zone that he was asking for would allow it, it was really tight, uh, fitting that much. Uh, rooftop and associated parking really left the, the people that would live there. No, or too little open space, right? Um, and that's something that we want to preserve in these neighborhoods, keep that character of the neighborhood. Um, so, um. The proposal was changed to, to put in two homes in there, uh, when the concern of. You know, more rentals in the Dixon neighborhood came up, the idea of incentivizing owner occupancy with. Interior accessory dwelling units, uh, was proffered by the applicant. Um, though it's not a guarantee that, that would be used that way. It gives you that option and there's really a lot more value in, in doing that, um, so. Uh, we, we believe that that helps address that owner occupancy concern. Uh, the, the neighborhood as a whole, if I zoom out here. You could see the majority of it is the R one six, so a minimum six thousand square foot lots. Uh, the, the property owner here has nearly half an acre. Uh, if you look towards the northwest, you've got some, some variety. Uh, you've got the RC zone, which has some duplexes. Uh, you've got some duplexes further to the southwest, southeast as well. Uh, and then moving down west on five hundred North. You've got, uh, R two PD zone. So this PD zone was set up to essentially do what the applicant's trying to do on his smaller piece tonight. Uh, provide separate parcels to provide ownership in their residences. But have open spaces common area, that would be maintained by HOA. Uh, that's a successful, uh, concept that we've seen here, that we've seen in the Franklin neighborhood recently. Uh, it's a, it's a good tool, uh, it's a good application of the LDR and the V LDR zones. Then you've got, again, you've got LDR zone moving further west, um, with, with smaller lots. Um, so there is a variety in the neighborhood, Dixon neighborhood is, is one of the older in North Park, uh, one of the older neighborhoods that does. With that come a lot of variety, duplexes, fourplexes, apartments, uh, that were put in before the RC zone. Uh, so, uh, let's get to the proposal itself. So you can see here how the proposal would fit on the lot, uh, the existing home stays, has, has its own parking. And the two new homes would be installed in the back of the, the property. Uh, with their own parking stalls, uh, so there'd be carports here. Uh, you park tandem there, there'd be a garage here and you could park tandem behind that. And you could see kind of those concepts in these, these, uh, these elevations, the, the two car garage on the. Uh, home one, and then the home two doesn't have the garage, but it has those carports just to the north of it. Uh, where, where there's room for, um, plenty of parking for the residents. Uh, if we can zoom in a little bit more, I think you'd get a little bit better detail of, of what's being proffered here. Uh, you see the green space, uh, that, that came out of taking one of those units out. A large rear yard for the two new units, some green space between the existing home. And those two new units, and then some, some waterways, uh, zero landscaping. Um, so the, the, the proposal is this, it's to, to take the LDR zone. To, uh, do a, a plat where the, the unit one, two, and three are on their own, um, parcel. And have HOA maintain all that space, um, parking is there, the parking. Would require twelve spaces, he's provided those twelve spaces on the property. Um, it, it meets all the LDR zone standards, uh, with this concept plan that's been provided. And, um, staff is supportive of it and, and recommends approval.
Questions for?
Point out to me twelve parking spaces.
Yes. So, you've got. Grabbing the wrong one. You've got three here. Four more here.
Existing home?
The existing home has the three right there.
Where is the existing home?
This, this striped portion here.
Okay.
So they have their three parking spaces, uh, for, that's what's required for a single family home. Uh, then the, the single family homes with ADUs, they require four, okay? So, unit three here has two in the garage and two in tandem behind it. And then unit two here has three in the carport and one in tandem. Uh, this would amount to back out space for, for unit three. And that's, that's how that's designed.
How do you get from the? Parking for the double garage there on the left? How do you get? How do you get from there over to the road? There doesn't, is that a road that connects?
So this is, this is their, this is their driveway access that would be installed. So that's all paved. So they, they park here, be able to back out into here and, and front out on five hundred North.
Can I ask, how, how wide is the driveway and the sidewalk and that little, uh, planter?
It's good, good question, it's a concept plan, we don't have all the, uh, dimensions, uh, the applicant might have a better idea of, of what those dimensions are. Uh, proposed as right now. Of course, this would come back as a project plan where we make sure, uh, a driveway like this for this amount of spaces. Would require sixteen feet in width, uh, because it's, it's over four off-street spaces.
I had a following question, I don't know if you know, but, uh, the, one of the letters mentioned. Something about two parking spaces per house on the street, is that, is there a parking permit program there?
No.
Okay, so I didn't, that, that's made it sound like that, and that confused me. So all this parking on the street is unrestricted essentially?
Yeah, so, so if you look around the streets, five hundred North, uh, nine seventy west, ten twenty west, nine. Nine hundred west might be, no, nine hundred west has parking, so you can park on all the public streets, it's open.
Um, just to understand correctly. Are we automatically okaying the accessory dwelling units with this, or are we only okaying? Um, the separate lots and the zone change? And then they would have to go through the same process as everybody else for the ADUs?
So the, so the ADUs would be permitted by right, they'd have to go through that, that process with the building permit and the rental license?
Is it because it's on the west side? Like, why are they permitted by right? Because of the zone?
Because of the zone, yes, they're, they're permitted in the LDR zone by right.
Okay. Um. Do you foresee, okay, I just have a whole bunch of questions about. In my gut, I feel like the two houses on that lot was plenty, and I don't understand why we're trying to jump up. And I have major issues with tandem parking spots, especially knowing people don't generally use their garages, because they fill them with junk. And then they don't park in them, and so I just don't see this, this is a nice optimistic picture, but it's. Going to take some convincing for me to swallow it, so I just have a whole bunch of questions. I was looking at that, um, the map, the overhead map of the area that showed the other houses on nine hundred West. Um, and I'm wondering, Mr. Ardmore, if you know how many of those other R one six properties are actually duplexes like you mentioned? Like, what's, what's the feel of the neighborhood? Because if you look at it from outside, they look like lovely small homes that are great starter homes, but are they in fact packed with multiple families or renters? Or, you know, like, what's the, what's the feel of the neighborhood that would, this would be coming into?
Yeah, so just in this picture, uh, south of five hundred North, I can identify. Seven, two family dwellings.
May- maybe if you could.
Yes.
Shout out the address number, so we're, we're looking at the same. I know, you're doing it on the fly, thank you.
So, yeah, uh, four eighty-eight here, um, four forty-three, forty, forty-five, four twenty-three, four twenty-five.
Okay.
Four fifty, four fifty-two, four oh three, four oh five.
Do you, do you know if those are like ADU second addresses, or are they, they've been duplexes for a long time, like, what's the feel of those?
They are most likely.
Illegal?
Two family dwellings.
Okay.
Um, ADU is, is a pretty new thing.
Right, okay.
Um, I can do the research for that.
I just, the reason I ask is because I'm looking at those, especially those lots along nine hundred West at, um, four eighty-one, four sixty-seven, four fifty-five. And I'm thinking those are all adjacent to the back of this lot, but they don't have the width that this lot has, and wouldn't it be awesome if we could get? You know, instead of them deciding this is a great idea in the future and all coming forward and not being able to do something like this? Wouldn't it be awesome if all of this could be done together and the backs of those lots could be part of this so that it wasn't such a?
So what's great about that is.
A small piece.
In the city's goal to get more owner occupancy in these pioneer neighborhoods, each one of those. This blue hatching that you see is, is more than just something to make it hard to see the map. Um, it's, it's showing anywhere with a blue hatch on our GIS. Shows an area that where it's permitted to have a interior or detached accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
So those property owners along nine hundred West. If they wanted to owner occupy, I don't know how many of them are rentals, how many are owner occupied, I didn't do that research. But if they wanted to, they could each establish ADU, they each have a big enough backyard to establish detached ADUs in the backyard.
I guess what I'm saying is they, they have a big enough yard to do that, but they don't have the width to get a flag lot in there. It would be difficult to.
No, not a flag lot, but, yeah, but a detached ADU, which in, in my mind, supports the goals of the city more than a flag lot. Because it's forcing at least one of those units to be owner occupied.
Okay, that's true. Um. I am really, can you tell me the logic for why we think the tandem parking stalls are okay?
Um, so, it's permitted by code, that's a, that's an easy answer, but, um. Logistically, the idea is the tandem stalls would go to. Your main unit or your ADU, so you're, you're parking behind the person that you live with, right? You're not parking behind the people that live upstairs, that's the idea of it. I have a single driveway, uh, we recently got a second car.
And that's essentially the same.
It's annoying to move the cars around, you have to do it, it's fine, it works. Um, I don't know if everybody has that same viewpoint on it, uh, as my family does, but I, I think it can work.
I guess the reason I ask is that it can work, but people would choose to park on the street because it's easier.
True, a- and people can park in the street, and as long as there's open spaces on the street, I don't see a downside to that. Uh, especially that section of five hundred North, if you look at it, it's a wide street. It's really, I go down that road a lot, it's easy to speed on that road because it's wide.
It's eighty feet.
Eighty feet, right, so when there's cars parked on both sides, that makes you slow down a little bit, and I think that could be a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner DeSoto, I think you had a good comment.
Yeah, what are the size of the, um, what, I mean, maybe it's not decided yet, but what, what are we thinking of the size of these ADUs? Inside, is it like a one, a studio, one bedroom, like, what?
Yeah.
What size?
Let's, let's save that question for, for the applicant, he's just provided the, the overall square footage on this.
Okay.
Site plan.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that goes, that goes to like, uh, applicant, just keep in mind that that goes to capacity, expecting. Capacity and occupancy, um, I have the same question.
Yeah, mine was similar, so just to confirm, the one thousand fifty square feet is both units together?
Yeah, I, from what I understand, that's, that's the, the structure, that's the floor plan of the structure.
Any other questions for Mr. Ardmore? Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Uh. We'll go ahead and have the applicant come up. You'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation, when your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted following your presentation. If we have questions, we'll invite you to come forward at that time. Uh, go ahead. Uh, and just state your name, sorry.
Tate Murphy, um. So I'm going to try to address a lot of the questions, and if I miss something, go ahead and, and, um, and, uh, go ahead and ask me. But the intent when we put in two instead of one was to make more affordable units in Provo. I mean, it's, uh, this is a, a way, I know it's small, and I know it's something that, um, you know. It can't be happen everywhere, but this is a unique lot where it's half an acre, so, you know, if you were to divide that square footage of twenty thousand square feet by three. You're actually over what the underlying zone is, uh, six thousand square foot lots. So from a, a density standpoint, you're actually exceeding what the underlying zone is at six thousand square feet. And you're able to provide a lot of those usable areas, provide affordable units. And right now pulling that driveway back, putting in the utilities for one house alone. I mean, it makes one house not very affordable, but two smaller houses become a lot more affordable, and they still have that yard. They still can have the character of the neighborhood, and, you know, they're far enough back where ideally all of that parking comes back. The, the square footage, if you look, we stepped back the homes so that the ones that are, are facing. And yes, I didn't probably go back, but the ones that are facing the, the two lots to the side, that's where it actually steps back on the second story. So we tried to be courteous of the neighbors to both sides where that's only a single story at that point, and then it steps back. But provide enough usable square footage in the home, so that thirteen thirty-four, that's the ground floor square footage. And then there's a second story and a basement as well in that, so that it provides enough living space that people can actually move around. And not just try to pack, you know, I went to BYU and lived in an apartment that was great, because it cost nothing. But it was not great, because we didn't have anywhere to move, right? So this provides areas for, for families to live, to grow, I mean, this is my primary home. This is where, this is where we live, we love the neighborhood. And, you know, when we met with the, the neighbors a- in the neighborhood meeting, and then after the fact with my neighborhood chair. The, the thought here was, let's try to figure out how we can provide something affordable, but also incentivize people to actually live in this neighborhood. And that's where the idea of the, the ADUs came in to try to, in a way, force owner occupancy into these homes. So that they're not just another rental, I mean, going back, my, you know, my neighbor to the left, the one two doors down from that, the one on the right. The, they're all, um, they're all duplexes. And of those, one of them has the owner occupant in the basement, but for the most part, there's just a lot of renters in the neighborhood. So this way you get that pride of ownership, and then through the HOA structure, you actually have maintenance that's going to take place. And it's not just going to kind of go to the weeds, I mean, a lot of these deep lots that back me, they're, they're just a lot of weeds. Because that's what happens with the deep lot, whereas this way, there's a lot of landscaping that's going to go into it, it's going to be taken care of through an HOA fee. And actually maintained and ideally be a really good asset. Um, you know, there's a few flag lots in, in the neighborhood where they kind of just. There's no maintenance on that common strips coming down the lot, and there's not a lot of maintenance in a lot of the areas, and they kind of just over, overgrown and overrun. This way through an HOA structure, it's able to be all cohesively taken care of and maintenance is actually performed, rather than just, you know, being overgrown. Uh, to answer the question about the width, so it, it's a two-way driveway, so it's sixteen feet, like Aaron said, that little sidewalk is four feet. That the total distance between lot line and the house is twenty-six feet. So once you take out, you're left with the six extra feet, that is the, the strips, um, for the landscaping and vegetation.
Can you say that again, please?
Sorry, I talk, I talk too fast sometimes. So it's sixteen foot driveway, four foot sidewalk, and then the whole, um, uh, house to side is twenty-six feet. And, and so the idea here is just, like I said, you know, to. Put a really good project into a neighborhood that we care about and that we like, and make something that's affordable, this is. I mean, it's still unaffordable in a large sense of things, but it's one of the most affordable neighborhoods in Provo. And with that said, like, these, these homes will help add to the housing stock in, in a very small way. And be homes that, um, ideally are a little bit more affordable than, than most things in the area. Any questions?
Just wanted to repeat this to make sure I understand, if it's okay, um, so you said, on this one, sorry. Uh, thirteen thirty-four square feet is the ground plus the second floor, and that means that the ADU is thirteen thirty-four as well?
Uh, so, part of that's a garage.
Okay.
So the, the four hundred plus or minus square feet of the garage is not part of that, and then obviously the stairs down to the basement.
Right.
So the, the basement ends up being, I think somewhere in like the eight hundred and fifty square foot range, I'm not including the stairwell.
And, and that basi- sorry, that basement is the ADU portion, okay.
And then on the, on the ten fifty, that whole section underneath is the ADU.
Is there a separate entrance? Is there a separate entrance to the basement?
Another question, the HOA, uh, is does it also include uh, something about owner occupancy?
It will, yeah, I mean, through the development, uh, so I've also, um, and and you mentioned this, but there's a development agreement. Associated with that, that development agreement has that in it as one of the. If you were to have a ADU, then you're required for owner occupancy.
I'm curious what your definition of affordable housing is. Uh, my my, my most recent, I I just looked it up on one source today says. Median home price in Provo is five hundred and seventeen thousand, and if you do a thirty-year mortgage on. Uh, eight point two percent interest, ten percent down, it's it's uh, three thousand eight hundred eighty-seven. So I I'm I'm curious, what's your definition of affordable and what what are these?
Yes, so I. What I'm targeting is if these homes could be somewhere under the five hundred thousand range. And then with the AD, I mean, they're not affordable, don't get me wrong, but then with the ADU taken into account, if that mortgage is about thirty-five hundred, you take into account the ADU. It's, you know, roughly fifteen hundred dollars, now you have a two thousand dollar payment, which is still expensive. But it's a lot more achievable for a lot more of the service workers and and a lot more of the people frankly that live in our neighborhood and and work hard, right? So in itself, the home isn't, but that's another reason for the ADUs, is they actually make the home a little bit more affordable.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions by commissioners? Go ahead.
I'm just curious, um, if the two lots was, or the one additional lot was already approved, the flag lot was already approved. And it fits nicely and it still allows an ADU, why um? Why are we cramming in a third aside from just, it's worth more?
Yeah, so first and foremost, it it's not affordable because the infrastructure costs to bring back the driveway and the infrastructure for one house. Is it's not much more to bring it back for two houses than for one house. So all of a sudden, the cost goes through the roof and the affordability aspect is is, you know, uh, eliminated. And then i- in part, the reason we did it in this process was staff recommended that I first get the flag lot approved and then come back. So from the start, it was kind of.
It was kind of the intention.
Let's get the flag lot done and then figure out the best way to come back and. And fit, you know, more on it.
But the flag lot wasn't platted, so it's been approved, but it's not official still.
Yeah, I mean, I I I could go record it, um, I haven't done that just because the intention was to to do this.
Okay.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, uh, Mr. Mur- Murphy. Uh, is there any district? Uh, representatives present would like to make a statement, we did receive letters from. Uh, Mr. Dave Necht. And we also received a letter from. Sarah Payton. I'm just noting that for the record, but if you have anything else you want to add that you didn't add in the letter, please, um. No district representatives, we'll go ahead and open this up for public hearing. Portion, uh, please state your name, where you live, you'll have two minutes. And if there's any other people, please come forward, line up in the front row and and we'll go ahead and take your comments, go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is JD Mulder, I own the property uh, right next to the left unit right there, my backyard butts right up against. Potential back house is supposed to be. Um, I mean, I expressed all the same concerns that you guys have, uh, the traffic on Fifth North, um, I know it's that that cars slow down. They do not, I pull out of there off a ten twenty every day, cars are flying. Uh, if you get people parked on that street and they're close to that stop sign, um, it's incredibly difficult to get out and see. Um, and so it's, you know, more more housing, more people on the street, it's it's just dangerous to be to be turning off that road and getting on the fifth. Um, also, the types of uh, uh renters that these houses might bring, I would imagine. Uh, young, maybe starting families, kids and stuff like that, Fifth Road is a dangerous road. Um, for kids to be playing on, I've personally seen children be hit um, by cars on that road. And so to bring in more uh, children on that specific road, scary thing to me. Um, some of my other concerns. Uh, like I said, my backyard butts right up against where the house would be. Uh, a personal concern is I go to my backyard for peace and quiet and now I have a drive, I've been essentially a street. I mean, if you're allowed, you know, eight spots back there, I essentially have a road running adjacent to my backyard and so now. I no longer have peace and quiet in my own yard. Um, Mr. Murphy stated that he's spoken to the community members about it, I can't speak about my neighbors, but I know that I've never personally spoken with him. Um, I see tape often enough that it wouldn't be difficult for him to come chat and get my opinion, but. But he's never personally spoken to me about this, um, I also know that this community, there may be renters, but. They're they're a single guy renting to a single female, they're a husband or wife sharing the top and the bottom. Uh, I have my home, my neighbors are an older couple, right next to him is another duplex, but it's the grandfather and his son. So it's not a high-density rental area, it's families and single, single individuals.
Thank you, sir. I'm noting a few other people from the public, please, if you're here to come out, we, your input is very important. Okay, uh, I'm not seeing anyone else from the public wanting to come up, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Commissioners, it's our time to discuss, uh, just keep in mind. Whether you're leaning towards. Approval or denying uh, any reasons why and and concerns you'd have as part of that. Uh, go ahead.
I've just been taking notes on my pros and cons here, so I'll just throw them out for us to discuss. Um, I'm actually not worried about the safety as they have a significant amount of yard back here to play in, so like. The safety of five hundred west, I feel like because they're set so far back, that doesn't worry me as much. Um, I feel like it will create a nice cozy little neighborhood enclave for these three houses if it were to be approved. They would also, because they're in close proximity, they would likely have a nice cozy feeling to them. And uh, an ADU incentivizes private ownership, that's true, if somebody can buy a property and subsidize their mortgage with it, that is. Half of them would be privately owned. Um, I feel like the house scale that's proposed here matches the scale of the neighborhood, they're not huge homes in that neighborhood. And these home footprints don't look like they're gonna be huge. Um. But I don't understand why we need to interrupt the consistent zoning to accommodate the value of one project. I realize that affordability comes into play, but since they're not actually super cheap, like. How much is affordability really gonna be affected by adding one more unit? And the reason I say that is because we're basically taking a little cookie cutter piece of this huge expansive R one six. And saying it only applies to everyone else, but not here. Um. I just, we we had a project that was similar to this, similar logic anyway in southeast Provo recently. Um, where it was a single-family lot that hadn't been developed for a long time, it was underused and um. The proposal was for a duplex, so similar, so it needed to be uh, have a zone change. And it was very controversial and the the, I think the main argument came down to the fact that we weren't preserving. Single-family neighborhoods, so you can't use that same logic here if you're intending to. Encourage homeownership and build homes, because people, but people have a different interpretation of what single-family means, right? Does single-family mean homeownership and people who care about their homes, or does it mean? Only one person can live in my space, and so I feel like we're kind of transitioning into this new interpretation of what that might mean. So we need to take that into account, but. I'm not sure if that logic that's being proposed here in the staff report is actually. True, or if I agree with that logic anyway. Um. I feel like the two lot subdivision makes more sense to me and I understand the financial limitations and how it helps or hinders. But I just feel like I've seen too many projects with, let's pretend those um, tandem spots weren't there. And there were enough for what was required, I feel like it would, it would still be parking elsewhere because it's easier and I just. People who have giant driveways don't use their driveways to park in, they're parking on the street, so the car in the garage doesn't have to move. And so I just have very little faith in the parking being adequate, even though on paper it's adequate. Um, those are my concerns and my thumbs up things that I noted.
So yeah, I have similar comments, um, I actually thought it was very thoughtful, I had several concerns that were noted down before, but they were all addressed. And apparently thought through, which I thought was great. Um, remaining concerns I have, um, you know, with an HOA fee to maintain all of this, I worry that. It's just gonna be expensive anyway, um, and so maybe it doesn't help affordability that much, but maybe that's just an economic question, not one really for us. Um, my biggest remaining concern is the tandem parking spots because. Yeah, if we never park in our driveway behind the cars in our garage, because we park in the road first, right? That's just how that works. Um, yes, there's public parking there, but um, I can attest, I drive down five hundred north quite often, actually going to the rec center. Um, and there is a lot of cars out there and it can be kind of hard to see around corners and see people coming out of streets and things. Um, on there, um, so I'm, I don't know, this one's hard for me, um, I think it's. It's a nice cozy area, it will create some much-needed, you know, smaller homeownership opportunities, something that we talk about regularly. At the same time, I see really what was expressed from the neighbors as parking concerns, I see those as legitimate concerns in this case.
I just wanna say, uh, I think it's um, kind of hard because. I also think many streets in Provo are extremely unsafe and I have been in touch with my own neighborhood council, the city council, all this stuff. About that, but um, we don't actually have any ability to change that, and I think that is kind of unfortunate, but at the same time. Should we stop saying yes because other, another body in the city won't take care of those problems? I don't know, I I have mixed feelings about that, I feel like they should, but it's not in our purview, if that makes sense. Um, so I I think that. They should be taken care of, but it's, I don't think that that's also a reason to not say yes to things that could be good, because. Um. As it's structured right now, that's a separate, separate department that has no. Um, I don't know. We don't have power over, and and I think I'm of the opinion that if it's a public street, they can park on it, and I I think that if if a neighborhood. Gets to a situation where they have too much parking out there and there are problems with their streets, they need to talk to the neighborhood councils, they need to talk to the city council. And get those things worked out with parking programs, that's. I'm of the opinion that that's, you need to get involved and not just say no to every development because uh. Something might, so- something in this other department isn't pleasing. That can be worked out, you, there there are solutions that neighborhoods can seek to fix those things. Um, and so I just think that puts us in an awkward position to. Essentially, if public works or whatever, you know, le- leaves things as is, we're gonna keep saying no because of safety. But like, well, then we'll keep having to say no to everything, and I just don't think that makes any sense. Um. Yeah, so that's that's my point of view as far as, I think the streets are public, they're paid for with public money and I think it's. Kind of weird, people say people shouldn't park on them, my neighbor shouldn't park in front of their house, that's, that seems weird to me, but.
So I'm a big fan of developments like this, uh, I love pocket neighborhoods, uh, this is a micro pocket neighborhood perhaps. It's pretty small, um, I I think that this is an area of Provo where. If we could turn back time and fix things or change things, we would have more density, single-family homeownership density here. Would be awesome, uh, we can't just, you know, looking at the maps right now and and the way that it's all set up, I mean, it's. We just don't have a lot of opportunities to do that, I think we need to take opportunities like this to try to help out and. And uh, and support this kind of effort, I mean, single-family homeownership in this area of Provo is great. Uh, we're close to, you know, uh, the school, I mean, the issue of kids and safety doesn't really bother me, um, that's a. That's a, that's something that everybody faces here, uh, we do have nice wide streets, parking on the street would actually help out, I think. Uh, that's certainly been the case in a neighborhood where I live, is we've had more people parking out there, it slowed traffic down and I feel really great about that, so. Uh, yeah, I think this is a, this is a great opportunity, it's not perfect, but we we've got big. You know, big issues that we're trying to deal with and every solution that I think. Helps in that direction, I think, you know, we can support, so. Yeah, I I like it.
I've read over the comments that we got from Dave Connect and from Sarah Payton, and I think they both brought out some good issues. About the parking and about the density. And I tend to be against this, I think it's too dense. I I don't like it in this neighborhood, I don't like it really in any neighborhood. So that's just my feeling.
I'll I'll go ahead and share some thoughts, uh, and we can continue, I'm I'm not the final word on this. Um, this is one I I I have uh, mixed feelings on, um. Like I live next to a, like a one point one acre lot that I would dream for a pocket neighborhood like this. Cottage infill like this. But it's one point one acres and uh, the only reason I'd feel comfortable. And in my head, when I thought about the future development of that, I thought, oh, that might be good for three or four units. And so then I'm seeing this point four four acre parcel. With three units. Two of which will definitely have planned ADUs, one which could, so have six units, um. Yeah, that's a little bit concerning for me, but the. Um, I'm really sensitive to affordability issues, I don't. When I repeated those numbers on median home prices and. And mortgage loans and mortgage loan rates, um, you know, unless you're making. A hundred and fifty-five thousand a year, you're not gonna be able to buy that home. Um, a a median priced home. Um. And an ADU does something that. That you can go to a lender with and. And show that you have cash flow with potential cash flow and and get approved on that, so um. I'm also sensitive to the parking issues that have been brought up by others. Yeah, so I definitely have some concerns. Good, um, Commissioner Hill and then Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, so a couple of notes uh, here, first a question, I don't know if someone can answer this for me, but. Um, the applicant said that if you took those three units, it would be consistent with an R one point six zone, right? So I'm curious if the zone already would allow it and. The area already had the hash marks that indicate that you can have ADUs, why do we need an LDR? Designation, I'm guessing there's a reason, but I'm just curious what it is, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Ardmore.
Yeah, if I can address that, um, so the acreage is there, right?
Yeah.
Uh, the flag lot rules in Provo City currently would only allow one flag lot on the.
Got it, it's because there's two.
That's just not permitted uh, under the current code.
Got it, okay.
But it is co- permitted in the LDR zone, just not the R one six zone.
Right, so the LDR zone gives you some better tools to to do like a essentially condo with the the homes and and things like that. With R one, wouldn't.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Well, uh, hold on, um. With the LDR with this being an LDR, um, or an LDR with. I mean, I suppose with the development agreement, you're you're kind of. Sticking it to what they're presenting in the concept plan, but with the LDR, I mean, it could be a. Something bigger than that too, right? Like eight units with the underground parking or something like that.
Why on on probably any of these multifamily reasons that you've seen in the past year or two, uh, they're almost. Uh, they're almost always combined with development agreement, because the majority of the time, the applicant isn't using the full extent of the zone.
Right.
And there's reasons for that, and there'd be concerns if they were, uh, so the development agreement ties it to what is being shown.
So like, like the applicant or some future owner would have to.
They'd have to come back to the.
Demolish the property and the presented concept plan.
And then try to amend the development agreement with city council, which was attempted once in the past year and was denied.
Okay.
So it's, it's a hard thing to do.
And my other comment was on the parking. I think, at least in my neighborhood, people don't get so frustrated with people parking on the street. It's when they park in front of other people's houses, right? That's when it gets frustrating. Uh, and so in here, I look at this and I say, you could park three cars in front of this lot, no problem. But there's four tandem spots, right? And so that remains a concern for me, because that means somebody has to park in front of. Somebody else's house, and that's where you get neighbors frustrated and upset about it, but.
I had a question for discussion. Um, Mr. South, you said, of course, this project is not perfect. But I really like it, so let's talk about what makes it not perfect, what is lacking in your mind. Cause I think we all agree on the things we love about this, like we love that it meets this goal or this goal, but there's also things that. Worry us. So what are your worries the same as my worries, just on a different level?
Probably not, because what I'm saying not perfect, like there's not enough of them, right? There's just not enough space to do more of this. Like if we could take this whole block and repurpose that and put more of it on there. Uh, that would be fantastic. So I, I mean, I think it's the constraints of the lot itself, you know, maybe we would have some. Uh, I'm actually not as worried about the tandem parking. I, I get it's an issue. I mean, that is an issue, but. Uh, if we had a little bit, a different configuration, then we could do that a, a little bit better. We, we maybe put the parking on the other side so that the. The entrance area where they are together is, is more open. I mean, I'm thinking of usability less than, than the actual structure of, of the. Of the development.
Can I just say, I, I, I think the parking is awkward and even maybe the little. What would be a flag lot, you know, street thing, uh driveway, uh is awkward, but I think that it's. This is what it is, that's what the lot is, and I think either way, it's awkward. Flag lots are awkward too, you know, um, and I think that. Uh, I'm inclined to like it because of the, is meeting the goals and I, you can't have. Like land is expensive, and so when you say if the inclination to say, well, it's too dense. Then we're not, like, it's always going to be at the cost of affordability, because land's expensive, especially now. And um, so I think that's just a reality that we kind of have to pick what is the priority. Um, in this, in that conflict, because it is a conflict.
Um, let me share some things that I'm comparing to in my head. Several years ago, there was a project that's um, south of the city building here, that it was in a residential conservation zone. And needed to be rezoned for the project that they had, and I believe they went to low density residential. So it was an old historic neighborhood and the owner of the property wanted to fix up the house, the main house. And then they had something similar to this, where there was a driveway that went back to two units in the back, and I think they might have even been a joined units, but. Didn't have garages, parking was in front, and this was in a, you know, like adjacent to the city center zone. And um, they didn't ask for the ADU, and so they brought two more units in. But they didn't ask for the ADU, so that's where I'm like, let's either bring in one unit that has a promised ADU, or let's bring in two units without. And I know that doesn't meet the, the home, the homeownership goal, but I just, I just feel like our standards are different. From, from minute to minute, and maybe that's good, because we have the general plan goals in mind and that has changed in the last couple of years, but. I just really worry that if every one of these properties along nine hundred west that's adjacent to this property or ten twenty adjacent to this property. Decided to develop their giant backyards, that suddenly it would be a really cramped neighborhood that would not have. It would have that great pocket neighborhood feel to it all, but it wouldn't be a pocket i- in this place, it would be a giant pocket, you know, it wouldn't be a pocket anymore. And so I just worry that saying yes to one person because they like that idea means everyone else will, will be incentivized. Perhaps to ask for the same thing, and at what point do we say, oh, this is too much? Do we ever say that? Do we think it's enough if? Keep bringing it on, we love it, we love it, we love it, because I just remember the argument for that residential conservation zone. Um, to change to low density residential for that really cool project. Um, was a hard, a hard sell, and it was already in a zone adjacent to the city center. You know, the central business district, so I just want to kind of keep that in mind that we keep saying this is appropriate for this neighborhood. This is appropriate for this neighborhood. I'm like, well, is that just because we don't care about this neighborhood? Or is it because it's, the houses are smaller and the scale is appropriate, or, you know, because if this was proposed in another neighborhood in the city. People would be up in arms that they would have this in their backyard. Um, similar to the comment we heard, which I think is a valid concern. I live in a place where there's a whole bunch of houses in my backyard. And they weren't there when I built my house, and it's frustrating. How much of that is just, sorry, this is the zone, this is the potential, this is the general plan, this is what we get when our goals are this, and how much of this is. We're helping somebody get more money out of their property at the same time that we're helping somebody get an affordable home, and where do we draw that line?
For me, I think it's not just appropriate for the neighborhood, it's also appropriate for the parcel. And I don't know that there's a lot of parcels that would allow us to do this, as I'm right here scanning, you know, the. This area and, and looking at the maps, in fact, that might be a question for Mr. Ardmore. I don't know if. You've got any sense for like, how rare is this kind of parcel in this kind of scenario? Like, I'm not seeing a lot of. Other opportunities in this area, but.
Yeah, this one looks like at least twice as big as comparable parcels, right?
There's a lot of deep lots in Franklin, Joaquin, Mazer, Dixon, North Park. Not so many with the width that this one has, yeah, I think that's accurate.
As, as I'm looking at this, I mean, the average lot size, if you wanted to take it that way, and this parcel. Uh, for these three parcels is still more than, I think, ten of the ones in the one block right there. There's a couple here that are point oh six, there's some that are point one. I mean, uh, I just think that this parcel itself lends itself to it.
Well, there used to be the parts of Provo that bordered on Provo River or close to the Provo River. They had deep lots, because people wanted a garden, and they would actually run the water down the ditches from Provo River. To, to irrigate their gardens. Uh, so at one time, I think there were quite a few in those neighborhoods that border on the river, especially. Deeper lots, to answer your question.
Uh, to the question Commissioner Jensen brought up, I, uh, I feel like. I don't wanna say we wanna like wipe out neighborhoods, obviously not, but um. There's also the idea that like, are we just going to continue to only build what we've ever had? Is that going to satisfy the goals? Um, that we, that, in general plan, and Dixon is more walkable than a lot of Provo. It's not as walkable as like, right next to downtown. There are changes, you know, when you think of the city as the city center and it gets less and less and less dense. This seems like an obvious place where. Oh, and it's not super dense. I mean, it's not a, a, a five story apartment building, you know, um, a little bit more density. It seems like it would be a fit, because there are places extremely close within walking distance of grocery stores, there's things like that, that people can actually access. Um, schools, rec center, all of that, so.
Um, I, I, I comment or two, um, one. Uh, one of the letters made a comment that, uh. Yeah, whether the properties are maintained by an HOA or individual owners adhering to city ordinances is irrelevant. Cause there will be a lack of owner upkeep of the properties and lack of investment in this neighborhood. I. For, you know, for the most part, I, I related to and understood and, and to some degree, agreed with some of the community letters. Uh, that was one portion of the letter I didn't agree with. I wanted to make note of that, and the second thing being, um. Uh, a concern with. I, if, if we're inclined to. To approve this, recommend approval, that, uh. I would really be bothered if, uh, you know, we make these approvals and uh, city council. Says it's okay in a neighborhood in the southwest side or the southeast side, and then. Only because there's one person that showed up to the meeting, and his opinion is just as valid as anyone else's in the city. But then if, if a, a project like this was brought up in some other area that. You know, maybe more people attend and they, they shut it down, um, and I'm concerned. With some of city councils' past actions where they've, uh, in my opinion, played favorites. And protecting some areas of the city over others, so if we're gonna. Uh, I am, I'm concerned that we. That we protect, uh, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. That if we approve something here, then we should approve something in another neighborhood. And if we deny here, we should not deny it in another neighborhood.
I agree.
And everything's ca- taken on a case by case basis, like because the fact, it's very fact. Specific, detail specific, e- every, you know, acreage and, and. Lot size specific, with all that kept in mind, but go ahead, you were gonna say.
I agree, um, yeah, I think that. I, yeah, I disagree, and I wanted to ask actually, um, the applicant. Uh, as far as, we, we talked about kind of things fitting in with the neighborhood. I think the style of the homes also might. Have a bearing on, on that, maybe me to a lesser extent than the density, but I'm wondering if you could answer to, is it going to match your, is, is a brick house or a home?
Yeah, it is a brick house right now. Um, I mean, to the affordability aspect, that's kind of where it gets tricky. I tried to put stone on, you see some of the house so that it felt not just like a straight stucco house, like a lot of the neighborhood is. But there's also a lot of the neighborhood, it's, it's either all stucco or all brick in our neighborhood, right? It's kind of, there's no in between. So I tried to do something that kind of meshed where it was a nice looking home that felt, you know, like there could be pride in it, but obviously. The affordability in mind, if you were to do a whole brick home, it, it doesn't really make sense anymore, right?
I don't even think you're gonna be able to see these homes from the street with that giant tree in the front, so.
And it is a chestnut one where they're poking, so go, go out, go, uh, the bare feet, but no, I mean, and the plan was also to keep that tree, right? As, as part of us and, and try to keep that vegetation and, and make it, uh, you know, a nice feel, so.
Yeah, while you're up there, is that giant tree coming down or?
No, he just said just keep it.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to keep it, ideally is far enough over that we can keep it. It depends on how the root system exactly is, obviously. But it, it should hopefully be far enough over from the driveway that it can stay.
Alright, okay.
I'm just gonna say that even though it meets goals, I feel like it's a stretch for me. And the, the selling factor is the parking, because I'm not okay with the parking, I'm not okay with the density. I just, I've seen too many instances where on paper there's enough parking, but it ends up being a huge problem. So if one of the homes in the back didn't have an ADU that was intended, I would be probably okay with that. If there was only one home in the back that had an ADU, I would be okay with that too. Um, but at this point, the parking is enough to say I'm not okay with that. I mean, I've been looking at the three in the front, if an ADU went in the front house. Are they gonna give a garage spot? Is there even a garage? I don't think there's a garage. Anyway, I just, there's not enough spots for that either, so that's, that's where my, my, the crux is for me.
That's why I asked how wide the driveway was, because I thought, well, wouldn't it make more sense to put some parking along the driveway? But it's not really wide enough, I think, without sacrificing the sidewalk.
I think the sidewalk might be required. Is that sidewalk along the driveway required? Yeah.
Just noting, Mr. Ardmore is nodding yes, that it is required. I, I don't know if we should do some polling, like informal polling among the commissioners, or if someone wants to put forward a motion. Dress any, maybe or outline any concerns.
Like, I've already stated my concerns, so if someone wants to put forth the motion, I can vote my conscience and that's fine.
Yes.
It's not gonna hurt my feelings if you disagree with me. That's not what we're here for.
Absolutely, reasonable wise could disagree.
Uh, I'm wondering, Commissioner Jensen, would you like to make a note about the concerns, or should we, should we s- see if. What people are feeling before we do that?
I wanna say your primary concern was parking.
Yeah, so maybe that's a motion, we, I could just say, maybe not a motion, but just take a vote on how many of us. Um, the parking is a make or break deal for us, maybe. Is that useful, Mr. Ardmore? To know if it's just Commissioner Jensen who is squirmy about the parking?
I've, I've noted concerns and where that came from, um, so.
I feel like our vote will kind of say that anyway, right?
In the vote, I think we'll, we'll push those out, but it's however you wanna do it.
Okay, thank you for your advice.
This is chairman, I'll, I'll, I, I'd like to see where, how, how many of us share a concern. We'll, we'll go by raise of hands and then I'll announce the count. Um, uh, how many of the commissioners? Feel there's insufficient parking, uh, based on the number of units and ADUs, uh, by raise of hand? Um, all for, four zero, four, four commissioners, I'm sorry, four two. Four commissioners are concerned about. The number of parking.
And by the number of parking, you mean the layout of the parking and how that contributes to the number of parking, am I correct?
Yes.
Uh, that's a good way to put it.
Secondarily, how many are concerned with the number of units on the part on, on that lot?
Can I comment on that? But I, I would say in itself, I'm not worried about it, but as it pertains to the layout of the parking. Like, the parking is where that bothers me.
I would agree, as was stated, it actually fits with the R one six that everything else is, so I'm not worried about density per se. But because of the awkwardness of parking it causes, so parking's the primary concern.
I guess, okay, hold on, this is messing with your vote, because three houses doesn't bother me, but three houses with three ADUs makes it essentially six units. So then the density is not the same as what it is on paper.
Meaning you might be, you might be fine with, with two homes with two ADUs and one home.
Exactly, right, but so three lots, like, like Commissioner Hill said, doesn't bother me. It's the number of units that are allowed in them by making a zone change that bothers me. Because then we've come with, up with the other problems that bother me.
Yeah, I guess outside of the parking, that doesn't bother me either, because the entire zone allows ADUs already, so.
Right.
For me, it fits the neighborhood in that sense, the footprints of the home fit the neighborhood. It's just trying to fit the parking in there.
So I don't know how you wanna word, word that, because it's all so interconnected.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'll do my best to, uh, parking in conjunction with the size of the lot and the number of units. Who shares that concern by raise of hands?
To me, that feels like the same.
That's the same boat.
Same thing, same concern. The one would be aside from parking, does anyone have a concern with the density, right? Aside from parking, separating that.
Yeah, does anyone have a concern with three, three houses there? Okay.
Okay.
Uh, one commissioner has concerns with three. Three.
Instead of two or one, okay.
Yeah, I just wanna emphasize again, I, I do think it is awkward layout of parking, and I, I recognize that it's gonna spill out into the street. But I, I also feel like that's, like I said, out of our purview, and if we can't, don't have any leverage to change that, to accommodate it. Then I don't think it's for me worth throwing out the whole thing.
I guess my problem is that if I know the parking isn't gonna work as proposed, then it's not meeting the standard. Like, the standard on paper is two spots per house, and if we know that it's not gonna work, if we, if we feel that it's not going to work. Um, in reality, then. We're not meeting the standard, so that's where I get worried.
Although to be fair, I think the standard does allow tandem.
Yeah.
True, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a fundamental, I guess, mismatch about the reality of the behaviors versus what the standards slash this is meeting. And also, I think real- realistically, parking is a problem all over the place, and there's no holistic. Approach, we've talked about that, yeah.
I just feel like it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be contributing to it. When we have an opportunity, this is, they're asking for an exception to the rule by changing the zone, so. We have the opportunity to say this isn't gonna be part of the problem. We're gonna do it right.
I want to say, I think we're ready for a motion, I think, um, we're not required to reach unanimity. We've brought up our concerns and the breakdown of those concerns. Um, so if we vote with, uh, you know, some kind of split vote with. Uh, it is a recommendation, this, well, the concept plan is. Concept plans, us.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, what happens in a tie? Since there's six of us tonight.
I know this, it goes forward as, uh, as a vote against. Am I correct? If we do not have a unanimous vote, it goes forward as a vote against majority.
Unanimous or majority?
That's what I meant, thank you. I learned that the hard way.
Uh, just, I don't know, out of fairness or, or. Maybe if I should bring that up or not, I should note that there are three commissioners that are not present. Um, I don't know, I have no idea what way they'd come down if the applicant feels, uh. Would want to have the entire commission present on a vote for this and, and do that, uh, you know, we, we could continue this. Um, but other, otherwise, I, I think, uh, looks like by his nodding, his facial expressions, he says he's ready for up-down vote. Correct? He, he, uh, applicant indicated non-verbally to me that he's ready for up-down vote, so, uh. Anyone bring a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put a more motion forward, uh, that the planning commission approved the proposed concept plan, subject to city council's approval of the rezone to LDR. For item five, uh, Tate Murphy requests concept plan approval for two new detached single family homes with accessory dwelling units in a proposed LDR zone. Located at nine sixty-three west, five hundred north.
Discussion on the motion.
Are you gonna make note of the parking? Concerns, or is that separate?
Um.
Mr. Ardmore already just noted it, yeah.
Okay, we're including those in the findings of fact. And the stat of the action report, plan of action report, uh. There's no discussion on the motion, uh, we'll go ahead and vote.
You need a second.
All right, sorry, a second. Is there a second on the motion? I'm gonna second the motion. Um, go ahead and vote, Commissioner Hill?
Nay.
Nay.
I.
Nay.
I.
I.
It's a three, three vote. Okay, um, item number six. They don't want to bring forth a motion on item number six.
I think, uh, yeah, I, I would recommend that the planning commission recommend approval to, uh. For the proposed rezone to the city council, subject to approval of the development agreement. Um, as contained item six, Tate Murphy requests approval of a zone map amendment for the R one six, one family residential zone to the LDR low density residential zone. In order to build two new detached homes with accessory apartments located at nine sixty-three west, five hundred north.
There are discussion on the motion.
Well, I don't know.
We need to.
Yeah, we need to have a motion. I, I, this comes back to kind of the things we were discussing where if it were, if the concept plan were different, I would be okay with this, but because it's not. I would, I would be inclined not to recommend it, so is that the correct way to look at voting like that?
Uh, I think you could, you could vote, nay.
Okay, I just, I just didn't want to send the message that I wasn't okay with changing it to LDR under any circumstances, it's just in conjunction with this plan. Should I decide to vote against that recommendation?
Um, I'm gonna second the motion. Uh, we'll go ahead and vote on it.
You need, oh, you seconded it, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Hill?
Nay.
Nay.
I.
Nay.
I.
I.
So a three, three vote. Okay. Uh, that concludes our.
Nope.
Wait.
Do you want a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, that concludes it, does we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.